Well, what a pleasure to see all of you. Today, we have a very special guest, our Imperator Frater Claudio Mazuco. Welcome.
Thank you.
So, we're going to have a discussion today, and this will give everyone a chance to learn a little bit more about our Imperator. To begin, is there anything you'd like to say to the members?
Thank you, Fratras and Sororos, for this beautiful occasion. It's always a pleasure for me to meet you, even by Zoom, because it's a privilege. We have this technology, we can see each other, and it's something really special. So, for me, to be here with you, with our Julie, is a real gift in this moment. So, thank you to be here.
Thank you. So, I have a few questions for you.
Yeah.
What would you say is one of your most valuable experiences as a Rosicrucian?
Yeah, it's, we need one day to talk about it. But what I can say, Fratras and Sororos, in the Order, the experience I had, obviously, each one of us can say something about this experience. I learned a lot about my limits. I learned a lot about what I can do and what I can't do, and how to accept what is impossible for me to modify. And it's something that we learn in theory, but during the years, we start to reflect about our lives, our experience, and we learn a lot about it. We understand perfectly that we are here to learn. And the teachings can come from everywhere. And obviously, we would like to change some aspects of our lives. There are aspects that are our responsibility, and we can change and we should change it. We should adapt, we should modify conditions. There are aspects that don't depend on us, and then we must be prepared to accept it. I think, for me, when I think about my life inside the Rosicrucian path, I think this is one of the most important aspects that I think that I've learned. But I would say, the entire life is necessary to learn something important. Maybe life is the reason for life is to learn, to learn continuously up to the last moment of our life. So, I am convinced that I have a lot of things to understand about my life, about the reality around me. But I think the most important aspect is that I recognize my limits, I recognize the things I can do, the things I can modify, and the things I can't. For me, this is one important aspect in my life.
Thank you. What are some things that Rosicrucians can do in these very challenging times to contribute to the evolution of consciousness and the upliftment of humanity?
This is an important question, Fratras and Sororos. I think we learn, we study a lot of things inside the Order. We have monographs for many years. But obviously, many of these teachings can remain under the intellectual level. Others can become part of our soul, and it changes our behavior. It changes what we call ethics, the way we live, the way we, the relationship we have with others, with an environment, even with the God of our heart. So, I think the most important aspect for us is that our teachings become something alive, not theory, not something that is only intellectual. We are not here to become teachers of mysticism. We are here to become mystics. It's something completely different. So, I think what we can do as Rosicrucian students is to try to express this ethic, this new way to be in the world. Not necessarily to do things that revolutions, even Spencer Lewis used to say that the natural proceeds by evolution, not by revolution. So, we can do little things around us, the way we behave, the way we talk, the way we think. So, this is very important. Sometimes it can seem that we are doing little things, but many times we can't, we are not aware about the incredible effects that little things we do can have in the world, in the reality around us. So, I think that the most important for us is to be a Rosicrucian, to express what we learn, the ethic, this aspect of the Rosicrucian philosophy. Otherwise, if it remains in the theory, if it remains under the intellectual level, obviously, we have this part of our life that is completely theoretic, and then we behave in the same way as the beginning, as the way we started to live. I think it's important to change this aspect, and everybody can do a lot, leaving and expressing this new ethic. This is my opinion. Little things, but important, very important things.
Thank you. How did you come to the Rosicrucian path?
Yeah, this is, this can be a long story. This can be a long... I always wonder if you understand my English, Fratras and Sororos, because I know, I'm Italian, and I speak Portuguese, I speak Italian, so the English, sometimes I say words that are strange, but I hope you can understand me, even because I have my hands to help me to express. Even when I was, when I was young, fortunately, I had a group of friends in the high school. We were very interested in spirituality. At that time, I lived in Brazil, I was in Brazil. And then I started to follow different schools to read about spiritism. Brazil is very, is very common. The philosophy based on Alain Cardac, a French thinker. And I had this group of members, we were four, a small group, to be honest. And we used to go together everywhere to study, to reach, to search, make researches about spirituality. And one day, I, we were talking, and I remember, I reminded that my father was a Rosicrucian. He was a member many, when I was a child, in 1964, he became a member of the Order in San Jose. But as, and he used to receive the monographs in Spanish, but the Spanish is not our language. So, he became a member for four, five years, and then he left the Order. But I could remember a Rosicrucian magazine he had, that image remaining in my memory. And one day, we were talking, and suddenly, that image appeared in my mind, and I said, "Oh, you know, there is the Rosicrucian Order also." But to be honest, I didn't know what it was in reality. And they said, "Oh, yes, Rosicrucian, it's interesting, and where is it? I don't know, I don't know." So, we tried to find the lodge, São Paulo's lodge. We found it. We went there when it was, I think, Wednesday morning, something like this, and the lodge was closed, because when it's Wednesday morning, the lodge could not be open. I came back on Saturday, and then I became a member. I became a member. And I was seventeen at that time, and I have to say that I lived an incredible experience, because at that time, you know, I was seventeen years old. It's a difficult age, you know? And with my father, we didn't have a good relationship. My father was always thinking about work, 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 and so we didn't talk too much. Then, after two years, I started to go to the chapter, that time it was a chapter in my city, where I live it. And then I started to see the rituals, and I was impressed, and I said, "No, it's not possible." My father, he didn't understood, he didn't understand what we do inside the Order, it's not possible. So, I started to talk to him, "You must come back to the Order, you must come back." And he said, "No, you know, I don't have time, it's a lot of troubles to solve." So, I sent a letter to the Grand Lodge, to the Secretary of the Grand Lodge, and I asked him, "Look, if you send a letter to my father, don't tell him that this," I asked you, "Yeah? Send a letter, you can say that you were checking the files, and you found his documents, and invite him to come back to the Order. I'm convinced, I'm sure he will be a member again." Then, the great secretary, at that time it was a Grand Secretary, sent to him a letter. And I remember that day, because it's written in my soul, he called me by phone, and he said, "I received a letter from the Grand Lodge, is there a stamp, your stamp in this letter?"
Oh!
So, I said, "We started to laugh," and he said, "Okay, I will, I will come back to the Order." And then, he started to receive monographs, and one Saturday, I said, "Okay, today you come with me. You will see something you can't imagine." And we went together for a convocation. When the convocation was finished, you know, the master came, he was, I remember, he was close to a window in the lodge. The master came and said, "You know, Frater, we are very, it's a big pleasure that you visit us." And I remember my father looked at him and said, "To be honest, I don't know who experienced the biggest pleasure." And since that day, my father changed completely, completely. I used to say that it was an archimical transformation, because even in family, nobody could recognize him. He was a person, he was not, few words, always thinking about problems. From that day, my father started to talk about philosophy, spirituality. We used to go together to conventions, national conventions, regional conventions, to discuss about what was written in monographs in the articles. So, yes, I don't know. When I interpret my life, I say, "Okay, my father opened one door for me. I went, I came in, and then I gave my hand to him, and he came back to the Order also." So, it was, for me, it's something that is, is an experience that is written in my soul, Fratras and Sororos. So, this is more or less my story.
That is so beautiful. Thank you for sharing that. Tell me about Soror Bianca.
Soror Bianca. Soror Bianca is another gift that life gives me. Soror Bianca is my wife. I met her when we were very young in the high school, and she was a Methodist. So, she used to go to the church every Sunday, and I became a member when I was seventeen. And then, I used to go with her to the church. I was not interested in the church, I was interested in Bianca. But it was necessary to go to the church, I went to the church. And then, we used to talk about what we, about the Bible, about what we hear during the ceremonies, to discuss about all aspects. Then, one day, I gave her the Mystic Life of Jesus, the book from Age Spencer Lewis. And she was very touched by this book, because she studied the Bible, she studied the life of Jesus inside the Bible. But the book is something completely different. She was very impressed, and then she became a member two years later than me. And then, we, our life was together inside the Order, because we became officers. We experienced many, many things together, conventions. Our daughters were columns, both of them were columns. Once, the oldest was installed by me as a column, so it was another initiation for me, because to install a column, you know, it's a special ritual. So, my life with her is something very special, and she helps me a lot. She's an incredible support for me. She's also my critic consciousness. She says what she thinks, and then I reflect about her words, and she's an incredible bright, bright soror, absolutely. She's a gift, as I said.
She's a gift to everyone who meets her.
Oh, thank you, Julie. Thank you.
What advice do you have for new Rosicrucians?
New Rosicrucians, it's interesting, it's very interesting, because, you know, spirituality today became like a product that you can buy, you know? You buy, and then you receive, or you have courses that can open your chakras in one weekend, things like that, you know? And, but spirituality is something completely different, Fratras and Sororos. Spirituality is our life. And then, we must change the way we see spirituality. We can't buy spirituality. Even our teachings, when you become a member, you know, the Order explains, you are not buying the teachings. Amor doesn't buy, it doesn't sell teachings. You are giving your support to the Order in order to express, to spread the Rosicrucian teachings. I used to make an analogy, because there are things that we can't say, but I think that there are things we can suggest. For me, this path, Rosicrucian path, is like, I like to walk in mountains. I have the Alps, they are more or less hundred kilometers from my house. I like to walk in mountains. When you decided to go to a mountain, you decide, because maybe one friend told you that on the top, you will see a beautiful landscape, it's wonderful. And then, one day, you decided to go there. So, you prepare everything, your sandwich, your water, your kebab, your protection, everything, and then you go, maybe before you read everything about that mountain, how it's the structure, how it's high, and all the details. And then, you decided to go. Maybe one Saturday morning, very early, you start to walk. One interesting aspect when you walk in mountains is that sometimes the path, the trail, I don't know what's the word, better, trail or path?
Either one?
Okay. The path sometimes is, it's going up, and it's a little bit difficult. That sometimes is normal, that it goes down, and you think that now it will be easier. But no, it's only a few steps, and then you start to go up again. You walk, and you meet persons, you meet people that are very well-prepared. You see people walking close to you, and they pass very fast, and you understand that they are very well-prepared, because you see, for them, it's nothing. You see other people walking slowly, with difficulties to breath. Sometimes, you see their faces are completely red. Other people seated along the path. Every step you give, you see different flowers, different plants, different insects, and different landscapes also, because the path normally goes around the mountain. So, at a certain point, you start to think that you don't know if you will reach the top. You don't know. To be honest, you stop to think about the top. You start to appreciate the incredible occasion you have to be where you are, and to meet the people you meet in this path. Because one important aspect in the mountains is you never should walk alone. And then, you meet people, you start to talk, and then you see a different landscape, you see an animal, you see a different flower. When you change the position, you feel the wind, the temperature of the wind changes. So, Fratras and Sororos, what you are starting now, what is starting in your life, is like when you go to walk in the mountains. We don't know if we will reach the top. We even don't know what the top means of this mountain. But it's very important to be here now, very important. It's very important the people you have around you. It's very important each experience you have inside the Order and outside of the Order, because everything together has a special meaning if you observe. This is spirituality, and this is the Rosicrucian path. So, we are not searching to become masters, to do incredible things, to transform the reality. No, we are trying to walk with our own rhythm in this path, because sometimes it can be difficult, sometimes it can be easier, but we are together, and this is the most important aspect. And this is the fraternity also, because we are all together walking in this path. So, we help each other. When it becomes difficult, everybody stops to help who has more difficulties. When we are ready, we share our sandwiches, we share our water, and then we start to walk again. This is the image I have about our Order. I hope this image can help you if you are starting, if you are neophyte, if you are receiving the first monographs. What we are starting now, what is starting in your life, is a long path that it will last, I hope, your whole life, your entire life, and it's full of meaning. We will be prepared to see different realities, different flowers, different smell, different image landscapes. So, I hope to meet you in this path, Fratras and Sororos.
Thank you. What would you like to share with longtime members?
Longtime members, what I can say to longtime members, Fratras and Sororos, I can say thank you. The only thing I can say is, thank you so much. You are rings of an incredible chain. And then, we try to understand where this change has started. We can't find the origin. And you are one of the ring of this incredible chain, and this chain helped me a lot in my life. So, the only thing I can say is, thank you to be here, and I really hope to shake your hands and to see you personally, not only by Zoom, but also personally during my different visits. It's what I hope. And thank you, Fratras and Sororos, to be here and to give your support to our Order. Thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If you could communicate with ten-year-old Claudio, what would you tell him?
Wow, ten years old Claudio. I would say that I like that kid.
Nooo.
Yeah, I would give a hug to him. Ten years old, he lived a difficult experience, and it was an experience that make a sign in his spiritual life also. I can share it with you now, Fratras and Sororos. Probably, it will be written one day, but in this moment, I can, I think I can share it with you. When I was ten years old, we lived in Brazil, and we lived in front of an avenue. And every day, my mother used to call me to go to buy something in a little shop. That time, we had a little shop so that they could sell thousand things, milk, bread, but coffee, and many things. It was also bar, it was a small shops, but a lot of things inside. And every day, on the morning, I was joking, and she used to come and say, "Claudio, you have to go there to buy milk, the other day, you have to go there to buy bread." And I hated this thing, because I was joking, I was with my thongs, and every time, every morning, my mother used to come. One day, she arrived, and she said, "I have to go to the shop to buy something," and I said, "No, Mom, I go." But at the same time, in my mind, I was thinking, "What I'm saying, I hate to go there." And she said, "No, I go, because I have to buy some stuff, some thing." I said, "No, no, Mom, I go." I insisted. But at the same time, it was, it was something strange for me, but why I'm insisting, something that I don't like to do? And she said, "No, stay here, I have to go there." Okay. Our house was developed, it was long, so I was in the backyard and far from the avenue. And to go to this shop, it was necessary to walk in the avenue, to walk in the avenue, to arrive in the cross, to cross the avenue, and to go to the street. It was not closed. I was joking. And I remember perfectly, suddenly, I felt like a cloud around me. I couldn't, it's difficult to express, but it was something like a cloud. And then, I rise, and then I start to walk, I cross my house. I went outside to the avenue, I start to walk on the avenue, around, with this cloud around me. And when I was arriving close to the cross, I saw a lot of people in the middle of the street. The traffic was stopped, and one woman appeared from this people in the center of this cross, shouting, "Claudio, Claudio, it's your mother." A car has, how do you say?
Hit.
Hit my mother, and she was in the middle of the street. Then, one man appeared and said, "Do your father, do your father work close to here?" I said, "Yes," so run and call him. And then, I, okay, the rest is. What I can say, that my mother survived, it was not easy accident, very serious. But she survived, fortunately, and she passed away two years ago with ninety-seven years old. And I used to joke with her, I used to say to her that she destroyed the car of that poor man. But that experience remained in my mind, because I could not hear what was happening in the middle of that avenue. And this sensation, and why I asked her, "No, I go, no, I go," and she said, "No, no, today I have to go." It was an experience that remained in my mind for years, even now, I am repeating it. And the idea I had is that sometimes, Fratras and Sororos, it seems that in our life, we are covered by a veil. And for some reason, the veil, we can see a different reality suddenly, where time and space has no meaning. We can absorb, we can see things that normally, normally, based on the space-time reality we have, we can't, we shouldn't, we could not see, we could not hear. But sometimes it happened, it happened with me when I was ten years old. So, I would like to give a hug to that little child, at that time, for the experience. He lived not easy when you are ten years old, but I can tell you now, it's a beautiful and emotional moment for me.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Yeah.
What writers or books have inspired you?
Hi, in different times of my life, I can tell you, when I became a member, I bought all books, and I started to read everything I could read, and obviously, that touched me a lot. The Mystic Life of Jesus was something that was incredible, because at that time, we can, today, when we want to read something about Jesus, we had a lot, we have a lot of researches about it. In universities, we know many things about that period, about Jesus. But in the seventies, it was completely unknown, and we have to consider that even when Spencer Lewis wrote that book, Nineteen Twenty-Nine, the manuscripts of that sea were not discovered yet. So, he wrote all about the Seanians, about the community, about Jesus, when many informations were not known under the historical point of view. So, that book touched me a lot, and obviously, all the Rosicrucian books. Then, I had appeared in university, where I read, no, I didn't read too much. And after the university, I started to read again, and many other books touched me today. You know, when I go to a shop, bookshop, I go inside, and I say, "There is a book searching for me. This book will appear in front of me." And then, I walk, and then I find a book, and I read it, and normally, it really has an information or something important for me. So, many books helped me in my life.
Thank you. In our discussions, you've mentioned before that there are things that we shouldn't talk about, and there are things that we can't talk about. Would you like to share a little bit about that?
This is an important concept, Fratras and Sororos, because this is the difference we have between esoterism and mysticism. Esoterism is, are the teachings that you can't share with others, because it's forbidden. It's only for a closed community, but it's forbidden to share with others. We know, for example, that Plato wrote some, he had some teachings, written teachings, but there are, there is a letter, the seventh letter, where is written, where Plato says that about these things that we will never write. So, it's called by specialists as the esoteric teachings of Plato, because there are these ideas, these teachings, that is forbidden to talk. Mysticism is something that is impossible to talk about, not because it's forbidden, but because you can't. You experience something, as I said before, the veil, you, how do you say, Julie? Lift. You lift the veil, you see a reality that you can express. The only thing you can do is suggest. So, if we want a good example, the art. Art has a language. Poets or painters or musicians, they use a language that can suggest us a spiritual or mystical experience. This is an experience that it can't be described, it's impossible to describe it. But it's possible to suggest if we know how to manage the language, in this case, the music of the, or the language to write a poem, or things like that. I, I read recently a book that is the biography of Eisenberg, Werner Eisenberg. You know, he was an Albert Prize, he was a physician, one of the fathers of the physics, quantum physics. Eisenberg, when he was very young, twenty years old, it was after the end of the war, First World War, he was in Germany. And he says in his biography that Germany was in the, in the middle of a revolution. People was shouting in the middle of the streets, the country was completely destroyed. It was a terrible situation. And the youth, German youth, it was a group, a cultural group in Germany, decided to make a meeting in a castle close to Munich to discuss about the future of Germany, to discuss if this future could involve, it could be important for the future of the entire humanity, what we will do, how we can rebuild the country. So they invited all the young students to participate and Eisenberg went there. And then Eisenberg says that he was in the castle, in the gardens of the castle. And everyone, everybody could take the word and go on the stage and discuss and say the new order, how it should be. And Eisenberg says that suddenly, he start to feel like a pain inside because each person on the stage described a different order. Some orders were even against the order described for the, about, for the person before. So he said, the sensation he had is that there is no order in university, there is no order in the nature. Because this, to hear all these descriptions completely different from each from another. And he describes it as a physical pain also. He says in a poetic language that the shadows in the gardens were moving because the sun was going down. And suddenly, one window of the castle opened. And one young appeared with a violin and started to play the shakona of Johann Sebastian Bach. Eisenberg says, Eisenberg was a musician also. And Eisenberg says, since for the first notes, I felt like a cold wind passing through me. And suddenly, I saw, I saw the order of the nature. Not because somebody or explained me, not because I read it, but because I felt it. And this order is the same order that has been taught by the religions, by the philosophies for all these centuries. When you read this experience, you can say that this is what Eisenberg felt was a mystical experience. It was impossible to describe what he felt, exactly what he felt at that moment. But we can understand, he suggested about, with this language, that he felt something because he saw this order, the nature's order. What means to see the natural order, you know? So it's something that he felt inside, it's impossible to describe. This is mysticism, something that you can't say, you can't describe, you can't tell to another because it's impossible. Esoterism is something that you can't say because it's forbidden. And obviously, inside the order, we have both. But for us, we must remember fratres and sororos, we are the ancient and mystical order. What we are searching for is the mystical experience, like the ones, the one living experience by Eisenberg and others in the story. And like the experience, probably you have faced experiences also. So this is the difference between these both concepts.
Thank you. Sometimes, members will contact the Grand Lodge and express their disappointment in themselves because they've gotten behind in their studies. What advice or encouragement do you have to members who just feel overwhelmed because they've gotten so far behind in their studies?
We are walking, we are going to the top of the mountain of the mountain fratres and sororos. The life is not always the same. Life is, the reality is something alive, changes every, every second. The, the reality we had five minutes ago is already completely different or the reality we have now. The realities changing each second. So it's normal that we have different periods in our life. It's absolutely normal. It's absolutely normal that we have periods where we are full of enthusiasm and energy and we study, we read, we read the books, we participate in activities in the lodge, we are officers and suddenly we feel something that is strange, the life seems to be very difficult, some problems arise, it's absolutely normal. It's normal. We shouldn't feel frustrated because we can't read monographs. So in a certain period of our life, it happens frequently, frequently, it's natural. Even because we have to find our own rhythm. The rhythm can be very different from one to another. We are not walking with the same speed in the mountain, as we said, we are different. So there are people that are very well prepared and trained, then they run in the mountains, others must walk slowly. But the important is that everybody is walking. The important is not to stop. So what I suggest normally, when you are tired, you arrive at home and you don't, you have no energy to study the monographs, you are tired, it's normal. But you can sit calm, put headphones and hear a music that helps you to be harmonized. You can put some incense and you can stay silent hearing this music, asking the cosmic to purify your body, your mind, few seconds and you will see how things change. So what I can suggest, don't be, don't feel frustrated if you can't, if in one period of your life, you can't follow, you can ask the Grand Lodge to stop sending monographs for a period, so the Grand Lodge will not send more monographs to you. Even because there is a psychological effect when you see the monographs growing and you can't read it. But remain in touch, remain with, inside the order because the egregore can help you a lot. If you put a rose across in front of you, you light a candle, you put some incense, you can hear some music very easy, you relax and you feel, you will feel something helping you, giving you more energy, giving you some light and then your mind start to be clearer and you start to see your own reality in a different way, it can help you a lot. So fratres and sororos, don't be frustrated, don't feel frustrated if this period in your life, in your life happened, we, we know that it's absolutely normal, absolutely normal. Remember always, try to remind the mountain. The mountain is, sometimes we go up, sometimes we go down, it seems easy, but suddenly it starts to go up again, so it's absolutely normal.
Thank you. Would you say a little bit more about the egregore? What is it and what's your experience with it?
The egregore is interesting because it's something that is in the reality of the egregore in the, is in the psychic dimension, it's not the physical one. But you can feel it, you can feel, sometimes you can touch it. Because it's, but it's a mystical experience, so it's, I have to find the words to express my own experience. I am sure that each one of you have a different definition or a different way to express. Egregore is like a structure, a psychic structure formed by the thoughts of all the Rosicrucians. Not the Rosicrucians, not only the Rosicrucians that are now in this planet, but even the past Rosicrucians that participated in this incredible project, in this credible thought. It creates like a psychic cloud, we use this word now, it's very common, you know? We save informations in cloud, but no, it's not this kind of cloud. It's a psychic cloud and you can harmonize yourself with it. For example, in the Council of Solus, you can feel it acting in your body, you can feel it acting to help other people. Every time you recall in your mind the symbols of the order, some words, some rituals, some teachings, every time in some way you are connected with this incredible cloud, you feel the presence of this, this cloud close to you. And then it's very difficult to define it, to describe it because it's a sensation. But when we ask to be helped, supported in a difficult period of our life or for health or for different reasons, we can feel immediately the effect of this presence. So it's something alive that we must give, we must feed constantly as our fratres and sororos of the past has done. And its reality is absolutely real, how can I say it's real? Obviously, egregore, there are different kinds of egregore. Today, even the sociologists, they studied effect or psychologists, they studied the psychology of the, the groups, you know? When people are together, you see that they behave in a completely different way if they were alone, if each people were alone. So this, this, this aspect in our, based on our point of view is because each group creates a sort of egregore, different vibrations, different frequency, but each group has one. And our egregore is very strong and it protects us against many experience. And even if we have to face or to experience something that is difficult, it happens, life is made by different experience, we can be supported by our egregore.
Thank you. Tell us a little bit about your background and experience as a scientist.
Well, to be honest, I was not a scientist, but I work in a research, yes. I am a chemical engineer, I worked for many years in chemical companies in Italy, few years in Brazil, then in Italy, in research centers. I worked many years with polymers and raising different kind of raisins for different applications. But, you know, I worked with paints also. And what I used to say to the, the guys who worked with me in my group, they know about, for these thoughts, I used to say that when we do something, we must consider different aspects. The first aspect, when we do something new in the laboratory, this thing must be beautiful. We must find the beauty of what we are doing. And beauty is not in the field of science. Beauty is an experience that you feel, you do something and then you, you see it's beautiful, you know? But how can you measure how something is beautiful, it's not possible. The second step is to measure, to see if what we are doing is good and it can be measured, it's part of science. So you can measure, we have tools, instruments, we have a lot of possibilities to measure if what we are doing is good. And at the end, we must see if what we have done is, is, is true. Because sometimes you can do something that it's impossible to reproduce or to produce and to sell it because at the end it must be sold. So it must be true. So you do something that at the end is real, it's true. And I explained to my group, normally, they were, they are much younger than me, that it's based on the Plato philosophy, five, four hundred years more or less before Christ. And they were surprised, they said, yes, when we walk, when we work, we work using the Plato philosophy, don't, don't, don't forget it. So it was the way I used to work, find the beauty before, then if what we are doing is good and then if what we are doing is true, is true. So this is my little experience, not as a scientist, that I like the philosophy of science. I really appreciate this, this research because it's part of the evolution of the consciousness, human consciousness. And I like to read books about the philosophy of science, but I was not a scientist, absolutely.
Thank you. What connections do you see between the Rosicrucians in the early sixteen hundreds with Rosicrucians of today?
This is a beautiful question, even because when I read the first time the history of the Rosicrucians from age Spencer Lewis, answering questions, I don't know in English, the book answering questions, then the complete story of the Rosicrucians. I remember the description he gave and then I found it in other books also, about the Rosicrucian, the group that left Europe in sixteen ninety-three, in Rotterdam, from Holland. And the Europe has, you know, the Rosicrucian movement appeared in sixteen fourteen, fifteen, sixteen with the manifestos in a, in a special place in Europe, in Germany. And then it's a very interesting story, I love this, this story because it touched me in some aspects. And then we had the Thirty Years' War that destroyed, destroyed everything that was created, but a lot of philosophers, scientists of that period. And the Europe went into a dark night. And then in sixteen ninety-three, a group of Rosicrucians decided to go to the New World, where we are or the most part of us now fratres and sororos. They decided to leave Europe, following some instructions from Francis Bacon. And they decided to come, to go to the New World. But I always think about those fratres and sororos in that period. Can you imagine, you decided to leave your house and what can you bring with you? A little luggage with few things, nothing more. And then you arrive in this, in this harbor, cold harbor. Few days before to leave, Frater Zimmermann was the leader of the group, he passed in transition. And then Kelpius was elected, was chosen to be the leader of the group. Kelpius was a very well-educated man. And, but I always has this image of those people in the harbor in that period waiting for the ship, Santa Maria. Can imagine the emotion and where they could find the strength to make this experience, an incredible experience in that period. And my, my opinion, the sensation I have fratres and sororos is that the strength they found, they found the strength in the community. I can see all those men and women together in the harbor, close to one, one to another with little luggage, waiting to go to the New World. And when I think about it, I feel this emotion because the only, the only thing that was sure in their life was the community, we are together. And so it was something absolutely important. So then we know the story, they arrived in the, in the Philadelphia, in Philadelphia, they went to the community already there, call it the Ephrata. And then we know the story, what happened. When I think about the Rosicrucianism today fratres and sororos, is that we must strengthen our community. We are in the same condition of our, of our fratres and sororos in sixteen ninety-three. We are all in the harbor, waiting for this ship that will bring us to the New World. But today, we know that this New World is not a country, is not something that we can find on map, is not on the map. Every time humankind tried to find this special place on map, we had as a result wars. We know that this New World, this holy land, it's inside our heart. So this, this trip is an inner trip. It's something that we must do together, but at the same time alone. Is the way that our teachings help us, we are a community, an initiative community. We walk together and then this is our strength. As we remain together, we will have the energy to walk in this direction, the direction of our own holy land. And it's very important fratres and sororos, this concept of the community, to stay together. It's important to use these tools, we can see each other even if we are far. But it's, but don't forget, it's important to go to the lodge, to the chapter, to the pronos, to shake hands, to give hugs, to see each other and to show to our fratres, to our sororos, sororos that we are together. We are waiting this ship that will bring us to the New World together because it's important to stay alone, we shouldn't stay alone. It's important that we remember our community, it's fundamental for me. This is the link I see between the old Rosicrucians and the new, new Rosicrucians.
Thank you. Is there anything else you'd like to share before we close?
Oh fratres and sororos, before I would say the pleasure I had to share these thoughts with you, I always feel like in family, you know? I can say things that I wouldn't say outside of here, some, because I really feel you like, like a family. So because I really feel you like, like a family, you are very important for me, Fratius and Sororus. And then what I, I would like to remind you, we are together. We are together, we must stay together because we are walking in this path to go to the top of the mountain. And we are a community. And you can count with my support, my spiritual support and the support of our egregore, Fratius and Sororus. And I hope to see you personally also, to shake your hands, to give a hug, maybe in one convention, we never know when. But we know that one day we will meet each other. So thank you, thank you so much, Fratius and Sororus. Thank you, Julie, for this possibility.
Oh, it's our pleasure. And before we close, two things. First of all, I'd like to ask everyone to send your thoughts of support to our Imperator and Soror Bianca. When you're in your sanctums, keep the Imperator and Soror Bianca in your thoughts. Send your thoughts of strength and courage and radiant health and peace profound. The Imperator is doing that for each of us when he goes to his sanctum. And I don't think any of us can imagine the responsibilities that he has. So I would just like to ask that everyone, when you're in your sanctums, to take some time to send your thoughts of, of support. And then to close.
Thank you.